I have eight o'clock, Mr. President.
Very much. So do I. Um, good morning, everyone. Sitting here thinking either feel like a minister or like a junior college professor. You know, remember your first day of junior college and thinking, what's this knucklehead gonna say that'll screw me up for the rest of it? So, good morning. I don't know why I even thought that. What did mean? Too early in the morning. I mean, that's why I'm thinking the roll call, Madam Turkman, we have a roll call to start.
Dr. Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Uh, public comments, the time set aside for members, uh, for the audience to make comments, not on the agenda, but within our purview. Don't see any of the real public here, so I guess. Uh, items of study, we've had a request board to move item six up to above item two. But I don't see, it'll be number two. We're just gonna do a little switching, if you guys don't mind. First one is introduction of our Costa Mesa sanitary district employee. Mr. Esker, you gonna be doing the introductions?
Yeah, I'll be doing my, I'll be doing, you know, I have the honor of doing the inter- uh, introductions this morning, Mr. President.
But trouble is me this morning.
It's, you know, it's Tuesday morning. I was gonna say Monday, so that's how bad it is. Um, this is Robert Morris and he comes to us, uh, from the Navy where he was an electronics technician enlisted recruiter for seven years. He finished as a petty officer or an E5 in 2015. Uh, he graduated, uh, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Cal State Long Beach, Go Beach, in 2022. And he had an internship with SDH Engineering where he worked on grading and erosion control plans. And he's married for about 10 years with two kids. I think Robert has a promising career here. And I'm hoping that he'll occasionally get in front of you all, uh, and, and, and present information. Robert, this is our Board of Directors.
Morning, Robert. First of all, thank you for your service to the country. We certainly appreciate it. We look forward to having you, like Marx's, making some presentations and, and think you'll like working here. It's a pretty good place.
Yeah, I liked it so far, so thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Thanks, Mark. Alright, so then, uh, we're gonna go to the waste composition study summary. Uh, you must have another meeting this, I, I can't imagine you having more than one meeting, more than one meeting.
It all starts at ten.
Oh, is that what it is?
Actually, more than that, um, I feel like that freshman year at Orange Coast College where I had been out too late the night before. Uh, cause I have my first grandkid who, ah, they're in the hospital and it's, it's a late night, but nothing yet, nothing.
You had your first grandkid when you were now freshman and junior?
Now, I was up late at night, but for a different reason then. This was waiting for, uh, Preston Valier to be born.
There you, did, did you take marine biology at Orange Coast?
I took baseball, so I was a little more focused on that. So I was kind of like a history econ guy and a baseball player. So I tried to avoid those sciences and it's funny, now I do a lot of science stuff, so go figure. Ah, so anyways, um, the first two waste sorts of the year, uh, we're going over. Uh, we started with, uh, the west side, south of 19th Street and west of Newport Boulevard. Uh, this was an interesting area because, uh, thirty-six percent of the, oh, we're doing the calendar year. Okay, well, basically the, what we did was a summary report of all the waste studies we did in 2023. And then, um, yeah, that's the second study. So the first study was the T2 route, but I can do this, the second one. So that one was actually west side of Costa Mesa, as you can see, our east side of Costa Mesa, east of Newport, between 20th and 22nd Street. Um, this area had a fifty-fifty or pretty even mix of multifamily and single family. Um, and we did have, uh, sixteen percents, if we go to page two, they'll show you the sort summary. We had sixteen point, uh, seventy-two percent of, uh, food waste. We just go down a little further to this table right here. So, um, as you can see, hardly any green waste. I believe on the first sort, it was flowers. This one had a little bit of flowers and a little bit of trimmings. Very little, um, green waste material there, but food waste, uh, T2, but I don't know why I have T2 in, in my records as the second sort or the. Now, this is, the T1 route was the, was the second sort. So the first sort, back to this one. This is the west side. So, the twenty, yep, this is the west side. So, south of 19th Street, west of Newport Boulevard, thirty-six percent of these properties had an exemption. They didn't have the green waste cart because they just, they didn't have green waste. So, this one, as expected, was, was very high on the food waste side. And like I said, the green waste there was, we got like a bouquet of flowers in our random sort. That was it. The wet contaminated paper wasn't extremely high, um, but it was, it was in line with the higher ones of 2023. Um, recyclable paper and cardboard and recyclable materials were about average. So again, these folks, thirty-six percent of them didn't have a place to put their food waste. So again, the sample was higher, uh, than, than we'd had. Sixteen percent, uh, was, I believe, the highest from 2023, sixteen point six eight percent. So that was the highest sort we ran into, but there were reasons for that. Uh, if we could go to the second sort now, the.
Mike, on this sort, this, this is mainly that complex south Trader Joe's. Uh, their carts are out this morning and so I went down to look at them and, uh, will they ever have a food waste cart? It says de minimis.
De minimis volumes, yeah, that, that's difficult on the, um, on the residential side. The space constraint is a space constraint. Uh, the de minimis waivers are talked about with, uh, commercial accounts and it's twenty gallons, uh, per week. So again, if you're, uh, a single family property and you have a green waste container, it doesn't come up. But that's a good question. I mean, there's, there's nothing prohibiting it. And if folks don't have a sufficient amount to warrant a program, particularly if they don't have a green waste cart, that's a challenge. Yes, sir.
I think Marissa had a comment.
Yeah, thank you. So staff is working with CRNR right now to develop a schedule to provide organics carts to all currently exempt customers. So we're not planning on issuing, um, any sorts of waivers moving forward.
That was my question, cause I know on Eighteenth Street, they just have trash carts.
Yeah, it, it.
Green carts.
Uh, definitely a problem. So again, typically residential service, cart service, you would, you would not have exemptions that pop up. Um, but again, as an older community in some areas fully built out, uh, we do run into space constraints. But again, with your two cart program now, food waste wasn't a thought, then none of these folks, or thirty-six percent of them, didn't have a second cart.
It, it, it's back to what Marissa said. If, if you get to working on a program with them, will it be before, after, or in conjunction with the blue cart?
Our plan is to have them, uh, rolled out the organics carts prior, prior. So it'll be kind of a, a staggered schedule. So rather than everybody who's exempt gets their card at once, it'll be more of a community by community rollout.
Okay, okay. I think that's probably, that's gonna be a big part. Can be a lot of work.
We'll be doing a lot of outreach and neighborhoods that are receiving their carts will get letters and postcards prior to delivery. So at that point, we're available to work with them, answer questions, make site visits, that sort of thing.
That kind of rollout, what you guys are doing, isn't that prime, wouldn't that primarily be condominium or ownership, multifamily instead of?
I, I believe so, yeah, for the most part.
Like a couple of bigger, uh, condominium complexes, Monticello and some of the others, they're gonna see that, what you're talking about.
Right.
I was talking about the west side.
Yeah, which is.
West side's gonna be a big headache. Yeah.
Well, certain fourplexes that I've seen have food waste carts. Um, CRNR put out food waste carts, but they're green. And so initially they thought they were, the residents thought they were green waste cards, as did I. So I talked to them and finally I looked on the label, it does say food waste, but they're green.
Yeah, but it's still the green waste card also. It's the green waste and the food waste goes in that green card.
Yeah, it, it, it becomes a challenge, especially, um, in multifamily, uh, with multiple units, it tends to be a higher turnover. So you may educate everybody and then six months, you know, twenty.
Tenant moves.
Those folks are gone and, and you get one new tenant.
Oh, Mike, who, who issued them a de minimis status?
I'm not sure. Um, again, I, I called it that because if the property didn't have green waste and they said, we're not gonna give you that container. In effect, it was a de minimis volume, but I don't know that you've given any official de minimis waiver.
There was an official waiver. I think it was a joint effort between CRNR and staff. I think CRNR maybe presented certain locations and then staff through contact with customers, um, issued additional waivers at that point. But I don't know that there was an official waiver process.
Alright, so anyways, um, that kind of summarizes the, the west side route. So if we could go to, um, audit two, which again was east side Costa Mesa, and if we could go down to the table. Uh, this situation was again, a lot of multifamily properties. And, um, we could just go down to show the food waste, green waste mix. Again, not much green waste on this route. Last year, we did a lot of single family neighborhoods and we had sixteen percent green waste, fifteen percent green waste. Um, the fact that it's so low tells me that they, they don't have a lot of green material. Um, it might be great separation, but that's just extremely low. And the food waste is a little bit higher than the highest 2023, uh, sort of the eight that we did. Sixteen six eight was the highest, this one sixteen point seven two. Um, wet food and paper, there, there wasn't a heck of a lot. Lot of, uh, recyclables, thirty percent. Um, so again, that's kind of, the reason we track that is to see how much is gonna shift over to that second container. So I'm thinking a lot of people that may have an extra trash cart now and there's that blue container. They can get rid of one of the trash carts and economize the program.
You tend to see one of the higher numbers, again, on my, my friend cardboard. Does this simply because there's more cardboard or because it weighs more?
Well, it's tricky. On, on the wet cardboard, it has typically food waste contamination or something that's causing it to be heavier. So if you looked at the piles in the picture, there's, there's not a, a big difference maybe in, in two piles, but one's a lot heavier because it's wet. So, and, and again, there's no way to, um, know for certain, but when you're out there doing the sort, there's some odor, there's some flies around it. So it's typically food waste contamination more than just liquid, uh, you know, water.
We could talk to Jeff Bezos about changing his philosophy with cardboard.
Yeah, it's, it's funny. The, the newspaper has gone down significantly, but the cardboard's coming up.
Good point.
Yeah, so again, the, the first two sorts of the year were, were definitely, I think, more multifamily areas. At least one, we knew of thirty-six percent exemptions. This area may have had some, but we didn't get the, the breakdown. So again, this, this could well be due to these folks not having the option to put their food waste anywhere else. So not to cast dispersions on that route.
These small, like fourplexes or were they, was that another big?
I don't have a breakdown. We had talked with Gabriel at CNR and also Mike Carey as far as getting some breakdown on the, the demographics on the specific route. We're giving you kind of the physical area, but it'd be good to have, this is how many duplexes, fourplexes, single family homes, uh, do you have large complexes on the route? Um, again, I don't know if the data ties into that easily, but it could certainly be, be developed.
I went out to visit the first one this morning and, um, so then I knew what it was. So I'd suggest you visit them in the future.
Yeah, no, well, back in the day, I was a big Dave Deldato real estate fan. And there was a single family property that I was looking at that was surrounded by a bunch of multifamilies. And you go by that property today and they built, you know, a couple of units on it. So I think it's a, a lot of multifamily in the area that we're looking, even though it may have been zoned, single family residential initially. People, uh.
But it's traditionally been multifamily. That, that side of Costa Mesa's been mostly like that since I can remember. So there were, there were some single family that were probably the pioneers, but, um, I'm not a big fan.
Yeah, then on the east side, you had a lot of those deep lots where they bought and they put multiple single family homes on or, you know, mixed. So it's, it's a lot of people in an area.
Any questions for Mike?
Bob and I were talking, are we planning to have another look at this in January, February to see what the differences are? I mean, is that on your plan? Okay, just for curiosity.
Hit some sorts on the eights. So again, um, it'll be interesting when you start your new programs, you perhaps might want to look at the recycling containers to make sure they're not using that as. Have a container, it'd probably be good to go back and see if they are using that container for their, their food waste.
Alright, as usual, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You play for Barry?
What's that?
Play for Barry Wallace then?
I play for Mike Main.
Mike?
Yeah, nineteen eighty state champs. We, we were pretty good back then.
We were good, they were a good team. Sorry, a little personal though.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, uh, let's go back to item two, the code enforcement officers, David?
This is me Schaefer, members of the board. I'm here to present my report for the month of April, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. The report summarizes, uh, three major points for ordinance enforcement, um, covering scavenging graffiti and trash containers in public view. For the month of April, we saw several complaints, uh, for scavenging in the areas. The month of April, I made contact with seven individuals, uh, listed by the location and address. Any questions on that so far?
Uh, yeah, just sound like you had an eventful one, uh, with all that. I was just curious. So when, I wasn't sure, and I'm sorry you had to go through that. Sounds like someone needs to get ridden out of town. But what did CMPD do or do you, are you aware?
Actually, they were very helpful, um, because, you know, this guy was on the move. So every few minutes I'm having to call in and update our, our, you know, location. Um, so they ended up meeting me at Geesler in Iowa. Um, he kind of took me around and, and then started heading to the River Trail. Um, so there were two units and then a third one showed up and actually went down the River Trail and tried to find him. Um, but I had some other duties to take care of that morning with that, all those trash carts that were, you know, set on fire, so. Um, but I actually made contact with them last Thursday, uh, found them in the state streets again. Um, called the PD, we were able to make contact with the PD and I sighted him. Um, and so, uh, I haven't seen him since. And, uh, so I've been kind of keeping my eyes out in the areas that, that I did, you know, have contact with him in the past, so.
He was arrested and then came back?
He was not arrested.
I just.
Um, they went to look for him that first day when all the trash carts were set on fire, they weren't able to locate him and, and I had to leave at that point.
Yeah.
Um, it was this, the, the next week is when I, I was able to contact, and the same officer Lopez is the one that responded and been very helpful. Um, so he's bilingual and spoke Spanish to the individual. Um, I did ask him, you know, ask him why he just disregarded my commands because I've been super respectful to him. And so he asked him in Spanish and he told him, yes, sir, he had been very respectful to me. It's just I needed the money. And so unfortunately, it's a sad thing to see him out there having to do this, but he was motivated. I mean, I saw him with bag and bag fulls of, of recyclables. So he was making an effect in the city as far as, you know, those, those, uh, recyclable numbers.
Yep, address?
Uh, he did not. He's homeless. Um, unfortunately, uh, I don't think he's gonna show up, but maybe so. I think my, my sighting is, has been a deterrent. And so I'm not sure whether the, the monetary, um, is more important than just deterring that behavior.
It, it helps. Even if they don't show, it's something we're doing, so.
Well, I don't think he realized that I had that authority to, to, to write him a ticket. So again, since then, I haven't, I haven't seen him. So i- if, if that was effective, then, then it worked.
Well, thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Uh, then the month of, uh, April, uh, as you see, I had a total of a hundred and eighty-seven violation notices written throughout the city. Uh, listed again by the street and how many carts were on that particular street that day? Any questions on that?
Questions for David?
That'll conclude for, uh, my report for the month of April.
Want to give us a kind of a synopsis or an overview of, of our little pyrotechnical?
Actually, you know, uh, you guys are very fortunate to have, you know, the, the PD that you do. Um, I was informed and I'm not sure if you guys know that he was arrested in.
San Pedro.
San Pedro, uh, five felony counts of arson and, and a couple of, uh, drug charges, so. Don't know why this guy would be coming all the way over here just to light carts on fire, but thankfully, it was just trash carts.
Yeah, I, I actually drove down Country Club after speaking to David that morning. And, um, I told Scott yesterday, didn't take much to get that can gone. I mean, they, they were gone.
Yeah, I mean, some of them were, you know, they must've had some, some, you know, flammable material in there.
He must've been pouring something in there.
Well, that's the thing is I, I, I asked a lady in, in, in the French Quarter, that was the first cart that I noticed and it was unidentifiable. I wasn't even sure that it was a trash cart. Uh, she said, um, I asked her, is there a neighbor dispute or anything going on? Cause this is my first thing with contacting someone that had a cart burned down. And she said, no. And I said, well, you know, you're kind of in the middle. Why would they just pick you? And she said, my cart lid was open. And so through videos and looking at some other of those locations, um, he was looking for carts he didn't want to have to touch. Was easy just to lean in and, and light it up and then drive away. So he didn't, he was smart enough to realize I shouldn't be touching carts. And so, yeah, I mean, again, one of those things were kind of an unexplained thing. But fortunately, they, they caught him within a couple of days. You know, those license plate recognition cameras you guys have in the city are a benefit.
Well, thank you for your diligence and sticking with and working with PD. Uh, it makes a difference and we, I know we all appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else for David? Alright, thank you, sir. So, get back to the agenda. Um, item three, Scott?
I think Mr. President, Dana Bajoski, our administrative service manager, will be giving us a report.
President and board, um, I have Doug Johnson from Ralph Anderson and associates should be, um, online also. Um, so Doug is with Ralph Anderson and Associates. And they conducted a comprehensive classification and compensation study for all full-time and part-time employees at the district. Uh, this is a recommended practice as an industry standard to periodically review and update personnel classifications and adjust compensation levels as necessary. This is in support of the dis- uh, the district's strategic goal of providing a competitive benefits package that enhances employee recruitment and retention while also promoting employee satisfaction. And the purpose of this study was to ensure that the district is able to attract and retain qualified employees by offering compensation that is competitive with the market. And also to ensure that positions with similarity in complexity, responsibility, knowledge, skills, and abilities are classified together. Also to provide salaries, um, commensurate with assigned duties and ensure that promotional opportunities are clearly defined and provide recognizable compensation growth. Also offer justifiable pay differential between individual classes. Offer recommendations as to how the district can better align its compensation system with industry best practices where applicable. And maintain a competitive position with other comparable government entities and private employers within the same geographic areas. Um, the study consisted of two phases, classification and compensation. The classification phase involved revising job descriptions to ensure legal compliance and reflect on an accurate description of the actual duties that are being performed. Uh, major duties and functions of each position were considered along with qualification requirements, including certifications and licenses for, for, uh, certain positions. Uh, career growth and flexibility were also factored in. And to ensure that the job descriptions are accurate and up to date, each employee completed a job analysis questionnaire, uh, which explained their duties and their responsibilities. After that, then the employees had the opportunity to participate in interviews with the consultant. And then follow-up documents were reviewed and discussions took place to finalize all of the information. And as a result, Ralph Anderson and associates developed more accurate and comprehensive job descriptions there, that are in compliance with, uh, the ADA, the American Disabilities Act and the, um, FLSA, the Fair Labor, Labor Standards Act designation. And also to serve as a basis for recruitment and selection procedures, employee performance and discipline, training and succession planning and salary structure. And in the staff report, attachment AH, uh, includes all of the, the draft job descriptions. It contains the markup revisions for all of, all of the job descriptions. It's a, um, it's a large file. We don't need to open that, but you can refer to that if you'd like to see all of those changes to the job descriptions. And then if we could open table one, this is the master list of class titles. And this here, I know it's hard to see, I don't know if we can make it bigger. So this is a listing of titles only and shouldn't be interpreted as a listing of positions. The classes on this list are organized by district-wide classes and then by job family within each department. Changes to current class titles are highlighted in green. As you can see at the top, then those are the district-wide positions, all of the analyst positions and assistant positions. And then, um, we go down by department, uh, each position. And then as we get to wastewater, you can see in green, these are the recommended, um, changes here. You can see then that, uh, there's a recommended change to the title change for wastewater superintendent to wastewater maintenance manager. That's just a minor title change there. And what it is, it's, it's creating consistency with other department management titles such as finance manager, administrative services manager. So again, that's just a title change. And then if you look at the SCADA technician slash industrial electrician, the consultant is just recommending that we remove the industrial electrician from that title as it's not necessary. And then the consultant is also recommending a new classification of wastewater maintenance lead worker be created. And then the consultant is al- is also recommending a new classification of wastewater maintenance lead worker be created. And then this position would have the responsibility of leading, training, overseeing. And participating in the more complex and difficult work of a crew that's responsible for all of the district collection system installation. Uh, also inspection, preventative and correction, maintenance and repair activities. Um, in addition, this position would require a grade three wastewater collection system operator. Certificate from C W E A. And then if we could pull up table two next. You'll see how the employee allocation list clearly identifies the linkage of the current plan to the proposed classification system. By summarizing the recommendations for each individual employee. Changes to current titles are also highlighted in green on this, on this spreadsheet. You'll see that the. And uh, the uh district clerk, public information department. It's recommended that the management analyst two be reallocated to senior management analyst. And then it's recommended the administrative assistant one is being recommended to management analyst one. And then looking at the solid waste department, it is recommended that the management analyst two be reallocated to senior management analyst. And then in the wastewater department, uh, they are recommending that the SCADA technician slash interim. Wastewater maintenance supervisor be reallocated to the position of wastewater maintenance supervisor overseeing pump stations. That would be Tony Gomez. And then it is recommended that wastewater maintenance worker three slash interim wastewater maintenance supervisor. Be reallocated to wastewater maintenance supervisor overseeing collections. That would be Jesse Blakely. And then um they are recommending that the wastewater maintenance worker three slash interim wastewater maintenance supervisor. Be reallocated to wastewater maintenance lead worker. That would be Joel Ortiz. And then moving on to the compensation phase, um, attachment A includes a labor market and salary survey. And this was the second phase of, of the study. And the two components of compensation are salaries and benefits. Which combined are referred to as total compensation. Seventeen surrounding comparison agencies were utilized for the survey. And source documents included position control documents, job descriptions, salary schedules. Benefit summaries and MOUs. Base salary and major benefit uh data were considered. And in this, the consultant compared district salary ranges with salary ranges for comparable jobs and agencies that represent the labor market. An analysis of the district's major benefits using total compensation model, identifying areas of strengths and weaknesses. In the district's current benefits was compared to market practices. Salary range analysis using a combination of market data and a review and analysis. Analysis of internal salary relationships. The data was analyzed considering pay structure trends and base salary. Then the calculation of the survey data mean, median and selected percentiles was calculated. Internal pay relations, relationships were also analyzed. In order to attain sound and equitable relationships for the compensation. So, so there was a lot considered. Uh, was factored in, in this. And then um attachment B, if you want to pull that up. Um, in assessing classifications with comparable agencies, classifications with similar duties and responsibilities were matched. However, not all classifications were matched, only those that are most common in the market. These are also known as benchmarks and bitch benchmarking is an industry best practice. It helps us to provide greater stability and reduces skewing. It captures the key market trends and ignores the less reliable data. Benchmark classes are set to market median, the fiftieth percent percentile, as you can see. And then if you can pull up table three. So the market median amount for the combined employer contribution for health, dental and vision. Is two thousand and eight dollars a month for an employee plus two or more dependents. And the district found uh that we are three hundred and eight dollars lower than the market median contribution amount. Uh, CalPERS health plans continue to steadily increase in twenty twenty-four. Those rates increased ten point seven seven percent. Um, the uh, the twenty twenty-five health plan rates are not going to be available until June, so we don't know those yet. But to align total compensation with the market. Staff is recommending an increase to the district's benefit bucket contribution allowance for. The employee plus two or more dependents tier um to raising that to one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollar. That dollars, that would be an increase of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. Uh, the employee only and employee plus one dependent will, will remain the same. Those are within the market rate. Currently, there are five employees that are in the, the tier employee plus two or more. And then if we could pull up um, or actually in the sta- in the staff report. I think it might be page six is longevity pay. Uh, staff is recommending adding longevity pay. And this would acknowledge employees who've dedicated significant service time. And they've reached the top of the um salary max and their salary range for their position. Currently, these employees do not qualify for a merit increase during their annual performance evaluation, even if they meet. Or they exceed expectations and meet all of their goals. So to enhance employee recruitment and employee retention. Uh, staff is recommending implementing longevity pay for those employees that are at their caps. And um, let's see, there we go. That would be the table. So um. Longevity pay would reward these employees for their service tenure and it would encourage them to stay with the organization longer. And the organization would retain that institutional knowledge. Um, so it would be a benefit to the district and this is just a, a suggested. Table of the percentage of their um annual salary based upon the achievement of their goals. If they achieve one goal, two goals, three goals. Um, this is what staff is suggesting. And then if we could pull up attachment E. Thanks for staying with me. Okay, uh, district employees who are required to maintain a commercial driver's license, class B or class A. For the performance of their assigned job duties currently receive commercial driver's license pay. In the amount of twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents for each month, their driver's license is in good standing. Uh, based upon the survey results of comparison agencies, the district is below market pay for this. Uh, staff is recommending an increase for commercial driver's license pay from twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. To forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month to be more competitive. And then if we could pull on that or if that same one attachment E, can you find that one? It's at the bottom. No, it's that one without a border. Yes. Okay, so what this is, is it's other benefits of the survey agencies. And if you look at the fourth column, you'll see standby pay. So for each day on standby duty where an employee is assigned to respond to emergency locations that occur after regular working hours. Both the primary stand by, standby person and the secondary standby person are paid a flat rate of fifty dollars a day. Uh, based upon the survey results of comparison agencies, the district ranks among the lowest for standby pay. Staff is recommending an increase for standby duty pay from the flat rate of fifty dollars per day. To the flat rate of seventy-five dollars per day for the primary standby person. Uh, the secondary standby person would remain the same at fifty dollars per day. And the recommendation, the recommended changes to the class and comp um. Study would become effective at the beginning of a new fiscal year, which would be July first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, staff is recommending implementing the changes um, starting the new fiscal year. Based on the recommendations, it will cost the solid waste fund twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. And the wastewater fund thirty thousand dollars, which is a total of fifty thousand nine hundred dollars in the salary and benefit accounts. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The current fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, three-quarter budget review. Uh, staff anticipates there will be a savings in the salary and benefit accounts of forty-two thousand dollars in the solid waste fund. And two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the wastewater fund. Staff is proposing to use the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four salary and benefit savings to cover. For the proposed costs of fifty thousand nine hundred dollars. And Doug Johnson from Ralph Anderson and Associates is available to answer any questions. If you'd like to chime in, Doug?
That, that was so thorough. This might be one of those times where I don't say any words. Very good.
I have a question.
I, I think the only thing I wanted to add is that um. This is an incremental kind of analysis because this, a big project like this was done five years ago and. I think the evidence that we have in terms of our analysis is that the district has done a very good job in terms of kind of keeping up with kind of the major elements. Um, so that's why these, these changes are kind of somewhat small. I think they're being very thoughtful in terms of dialing in things like longevity pay, the um standby pay and those things. Those are elements in compensation that can get off track fairly quickly. And they're kind of a key in terms of um efficiency, expertise, um productivity type of uh benefit. So they, they tend to be a um very cost-effective mechanisms in terms of ensuring you have a workforce that's. Able to be deployed and utilized in terms of the services you provide. And that's all I need to say.
Do you have questions? Go ahead, Bob.
Um, Doug. Um, who chose Orange County Sand District to be in, in this uh. Class and compensation study?
So we've selected a, a large group of agencies that are going to be a mix of agencies that are very close proximity to you. Agencies that provide similar services and a mix of larger, smaller and similar size. So. My, and when we look at a, a marketplace like this, Orange County Sanitation District is so close to you, it's hard not to consider them. As a market presence or a market element, but they're only one uh of what sixteen agencies um that are in the seventeen agencies that are in the survey. So. Um, their impact is going to be fairly small, but they are an, you know, they're an element that you compete in because they're just so close to you.
Well, my question is related to, I sit on that board and. Um, those boards of directors. Direction to staff is that those employees for Orange County Sand District be paid at seventy-five percent. Of um, of um compensation. So if you look through. You know, the, the salary evaluations, there's lots of times twenty-five percent higher than anyone else in, in, in there. And, and because I think this agency and most agencies and maybe, maybe some of the others also. Um, but when you have an agency that is, its goal is to pay. Seventy-five percent of market, you know, they're gonna almost always be the, the highest. Compensation for a, a similar classification. Um, so I, 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 I would recommend in the future you not put them in with. Or you, you find out how many of those agencies are abo- above, the goal is the medium. Rather than the goal of Orange County Sand District, which is seventy-five percent. So they significantly pay more, you know, for a, a, a particular classification. And uh, if you look down through the salary thing, they're almost always. Twenty to thirty percent higher than the other agencies. So. It, it, it's insignificant probably when you've got sixteen agencies, you know, that, that you're evaluating against, but. Um, I, 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 I think it's worth at least looking at not including them in, in future comp and class studies.
Got to have the top, the median and the bottom, so.
Well, they're, they're not only the top, they're usually the top plus.
Yeah, that, I mean, seventeen agencies, it is what it is. It's what you're competing with. So when you look at it through the lens of recruitment retention. Irrespective of what their specific policy is in terms of salary setting at Orange County Sanitation District. The salaries that they pay their employees are the competing salaries you have to consider. And you are not matching their salary plan, including them in the mix. And you're paying the median, which is the middle of the market. The seventy-fifth percentile, the percentiles are kind of a interesting statistic. They're very rank-based and so. It doesn't mean that seventy-fifth percentile is twenty-five percent more in compensation than the fiftieth percentile. In fact, in hundreds of surveys that we've done in a typical kind of market array, the seventy-fifth percentile in terms of a dollar difference is usually closer to around. Eight percent. All it means is that you're positioning yourself in that top quarter of the sample. And they're not at a hundred percent. There's going to be agencies that are, you know, above that point. So I think it's an agency because of their market presence is one. Um, that it makes sense to include, but because it's one of seventeen and we're using the median. Its impact in terms of your salary analysis is going to be very, very low.
Yeah, uh, Doug, a question on, in a follow-up to Director Oden. So. You know, about half of them were cities and the other half were water districts, give or take. Uh, can you walk me through the, because obviously cities are quite different than special districts and some may or may not have. Positions like us. And so can you just walk me through that, those comparisons with regards to the cities?
Yeah, so that there are a number of jobs you do have are found in these cities. So it's, it's not like they're a wasted group of agencies. We found productive comparable matches for them. I, I do recognize that city governments operate different than special districts. Uh, particularly in terms of their revenue sources. And then of course, they're having to. Uh, their budgets are dispersed around, uh, along a lot more services. So obviously police and fire are a good example. Or, you know, other kinds of services that they have. But when it comes down to it, what we're looking at is when you have a job opening for a code enforcement officer. Um, or wastewater a position, are these agencies ones you compete with to fill those slots? And the answer is yes, that you have a number of jobs that when you have a job opening, you're likely to compete for these agencies that are cities just as much as a special district. So that's the rationale for including them as they, they represent the marketplace that you are immersed in. And to ignore them as just ignoring an element um in terms of recruitment retention impact.
Yeah, I, I would agree not ignoring, but my question is how difficult or is it possible to. Break apart the results of the cities and the other special districts for the purpose of this study? Is that even doable at this point or no?
Well, you could do that. My guess is that you're going to have, the cities overall are probably going to be a little bit less in some of the specific utility types of jobs that you have. So they might represent, you know, more like the bottom third of the market, but there's a lot of exceptions in here because some of these agencies. Um, just are overall because of their, their, their presence in the marketplace probably pay more. So I haven't done that analysis, but my guess is it wouldn't have a, a huge impact on the bottom line. Um, it's certainly something we can easily do if you want to see the, the data modeled with special districts only. And then with the addition of cities, just to see what that impact is, um, maybe a few percentage points. Um, I wouldn't expect it to be a huge impact.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it's easy, doesn't take up hours and days. If it's something that could be separated in the next staff report of. Here's your median of cities, here's your medians of special districts and that, that would be helpful.
I'll, I'll provide that. Yes, it's very easy.
Fantastic. Thank you, Doug. And then uh, question um for uh. Uh, Diane, I guess, um, can you walk me through the twenty-nine thousand dollar salary labeled as salary increase? And that's just because of if accepted, the reclassification of job, current job titles. Will put the current employee in a different salary range, am I understanding that right?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. So that's just, okay. And then um. Budget wise to either to Diane or Caitlin, can you walk me through uh? The budget impact for our current budget cycle and then what are we looking at for future years? How this all plays out after this next two-year budget cycle?
Good morning, directors. Um, so the budget, um, our senior accountant Lou Tran. She went through the next fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and redo the um. Um, salary and benefits budget. And so if we. Um, so in total, you're really looking at seventy-two thousands, what you need. And we're saying there are forty, uh, we're projecting a seven, uh, forty-three thousand dollars. And we're saying there are forty, we're projecting a seven uh forty three thousand dollars savings because of the um cola that we approved before of five percent. And this July, it's coming in at um lower three point four percent. So there's a savings of forty three thousand. And that's also including all the adjustment. So the total savings forty three thousand. So really, you you only need twenty nine thousand to cover the difference.
Uh, can I just jump, so in that, but you, I think you'd said, we need seventy for all of these proposed changes. That, okay.
Seventy two, to be honest.
Seven, thank you. There there's an accounting mind versus mine, exact science. Thank you for that. Um, but and then just to follow up, so that's our current budget cycle. What does this do to the the next one? I mean, is there any forecastable foreseeable things we can apply to this?
Well, that's part of the, it's the um lower um cost of living, three point four versus what we approved of five percent.
Okay, okay, um, gotcha. And then uh, oh, uh, going back to Diane, early on the report, you had I just, maybe I misheard it, but to get to the median on the uh the benefits plan, we would need an additional three oh eight. And then I think you had said a hundred and something you were recommending. What what, why the difference between to get to the median? We needed three oh eight, but you were only, or the staff was only recommending a hundred something? Or did I mishear that?
So staff calculated, uh so the the intent of the cafeteria plan, the um employer contribution amount is not to cover one hundred percent of employee employee benefits. We're looking more at eighty eighty, around the number eighty percent. And so that would um for each tier employee only, employee plus one, employee plus two or more. Uh, we just calculated with that in mind.
If I get it, so the goal, the goal is always to to fund for employee only a hundred percent events. It it the district will fund. When it comes employee plus one, employee plus two, we felt eighty twenty was a fair sound. The district would would fund eighty percent, the employee contribute to twenty percent. So the the one eight seventy five will get us to eighty twenty.
Okay, and wha- wha- what will that do to our ranking then in the median of this particular study? It it'll still be on the lower end of the median?
It'll be on the lower median, yes, it will be.
Okay, got it. All right, that's all I have for right now, but thank you.
Tim, long red slides. Or can we project a five year from, is this gonna be a five year study? This is five year for the next five years?
Yes, we wouldn't, we typically would not do another study for five years.
Cost per each year increase for the five years?
We can bring that back, we have not, we can bring it back.
Right, let's get that after too. And then I have a concern, I'm not, you know, I've had a concern for the last couple of years about uh staff working at home. And I think I I I don't really don't, I think the trend is staff coming back to work on most businesses. And I'm concerned about an increase when they're working at home so much personally. And that's just me.
Well, I I think you're seeing a a lot of the private sector employees are revolting on that. Um, they are dead against coming back um to work. I think employees want flexibility, and this gives them that flexibility to to work from home. Um, uh, it's also a good um uh recruitment tool uh to know that you can work from home two to three days a week. Now, we've always told employees this is a um, it's not a right, it's a privilege. And we can always take it back, we if we don't see any production, we if we see less production in the week, then you will be coming back and working in the office. I have not seen that in any of the staff, that staff is is, I have not seen any drop in any production from staff working from home. Again, it's a good morale booster, it's a good recruiting tool. Um, it's, we have to, the way the workforce was ten years ago has changed. We have to adapt, we have to, in my opinion, we have to change. And I think I am not seeing any any loss productivity, so I'm still believe working from home is a benefit to the district.
I see my concern.
Understood.
I have time for members, but it's a concern for me.
Can can I just follow up on that? Because I'm, I've got the same concern. Uh, and I know private and public, two different things, I get it. But on the private sector, employees revolted early on, and now employers are coming back and saying, well, we see all the layoffs. So it's going back. So what's our current policy on the at home work? Is it one day, two day? I can't remember.
Three days a week, so um it's, but it's it's flexible. So like on Tuesdays, um every Tuesday, everyone's here in the office, that's the one day of the week, we're all here. But it varies, um some some are off, um Monday and Wednesdays, uh some are off, um Monday and Wednesdays, and then some are off, you know, there's just fairs on the days they're on. And then on the Fridays, um it's really on appointments only. So if someone wants to, uh when we're open, if someone wants to uh meet with uh engineering, um actually, I might take that back, engineering is usually here because of all the customer service that comes in. So engineering, permitting office, they're here on on Fridays to address um um contractors and and permitting issues. As far as the rest of the staff, it's um uh three days a week that they can work from home.
Well, I share Director Perry's, and this is pro, this is a separate discussion, as I'm sure everyone here is frowning at us going, you don't say it. But I've got to, I just, I think it needs to be looked at. Especially for new hires, I understand people have been maybe working last three or four years under that.
I would concur with you, there was a lot, I'm not seeing any loss of production. So what's the concern? I don't understand what the, if 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 the work is still being produced, and we're still providing that service, what's the concern?
Well, my moan, main concern would be new hires. I don't agree.
New hires do not, do new hires do not get to work from home right away? I think they have to be here for six months before they can work from work from home. So first six, because they, we want them to to um uh get acclimated with the with our culture, with the way we do business, policy procedures. So the first six months, they they do have to work in the office uh five days or four days a week, the other, the other Friday we're closed, so. So they're here most of the time, the for the first six months.
And if if I could add also, so staff has the option of working from home up to three days a week, but there's days that staff may feel that, no, I need to be in the office, we have this meeting or I it's not that that staff necessarily is every week working from home, three days a week. All staff, some, you know, it depends on the on the workload. Some things um can't be done at home, some things we have to be in the office for. So I think, as Scott said, I think it's up to the supervisor to make sure that the employee is maintaining their productivity. We know uh what assignments our staff has, and we're able to to tell that, you know, if there's a a decrease, then, I mean, I think we have the ability to to ask that employee to be working in the office where they're, they can have better supervision. But, I mean, quite honestly, we haven't had issues that we've had to deal with like that. And like Scott said, with new employees, they they do not, they're not allowed that that privilege until they've worked for uh six months. There's a telecommuting agreement that each employee has to um to sign and abide by. So it's not, it's it's not something we're loose with, it's, it is something that 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 staff uh is is on top of. But it it is a great recruitment tool, I do have to say, not just uh recruitment, but retention also, I think, um as well. I know, uh, you know, in talking in interviews and talking to applicants, they, that's attractive to them.
Oh, I I know it is, doesn't mean that's gonna, well, nevermind, I've I've said what I've said. That's, my feeling is different, so.
Understood.
It it it's interesting, I I, from my, from my industry, it's actually a little bit different than what you guys are talking about. You know, traditionally, for those of us of most of our generation up here, you went to see your insurance guy, you went to his office, you sat at his desk, and you did the work. So you had to have staff, you had to have that infrastructure, if you will. That's changed since pandemic. I'm without staff right now, and the people that I've talked to have said, well, just let them work remotely. Um, I'm still the old fashioned guy that likes to have people come into my office. But that said, the people that I've talked to about possible employment have brought up, how can I work remotely? Yeah, you can, you're still gonna sell the, well, we don't sell much product of anything right now. But, I mean, traditionally, that's what we do. So there are, I, and I consider what I do, um not a retail setting, but more of a public service setting like we have here to a certain.
Selling. It it was. The old rule of sales is sell wherever you can.
Tell state, tell State Farm I need to sell. Uh, so there there's some argument, I I hear what's being said up here. Which probably leads me to, we're not going to resolve this at the at the May board meeting. Did you, are you?
Well, we're not, we're, I mean, the intention, we were was not here to talk about telecommuted work. We're here to talk about the comp and class study. If you want to talk about the um tele- telecommuted work, I think we have to agendaize and talk that another another study session.
I agree, Scott. Um, before I forget, the twenty nine thousand, does that include the two, is there two wastewater people that are being moved up into management classifications, right?
Yes, there's.
Tony and Joel, or Tony.
Tony and Jesse moving to supervisor roles, yes.
Okay, so that twenty nine thousand, bottom line that you're talking about, you know, respective of the the savings in cola, which leads me to, have we already determined a three point four is the number you're gonna ask us for?
Ye- yes, yes, and that's um correct.
But we've already budgeted for five?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and then this is kind of a minor question, but standby, how often do we need standby?
Every day.
So we have someone on standby every day?
Seven days a week.
Okay, I I I remember the days when my dad worked Mesa Water, he was on standby and they had, in his dad, they rotated, they didn't do it. So we only have.
Well, we do, we do, we do that too, we rotate.
How many people are on standby?
Um, I mean, we have um.
They're in the rotation.
Seven.
So lo, so all the guys, basically?
We have, we have one, one employee that's just, he lives too far away. And so he would, he wouldn't get here on time if there was an emergency, so he's the one employee that that's not on standby.
Okay, got it. Bob?
Um, are are the sewer collection workers on ten hour days?
Four ten is correct.
But when they get a holiday, it's the ten hour day.
Yeah.
Okay. The telecommuting process uh still is still uh in in interest. On the chart where we have annual, shows annual leave, sanitary district somehow is 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 the leader of the pack for holidays. Um, I remember when we were working, when I was working at Orange County Sand District, we got ten days. Um, I would encourage, when staff asks for another holiday, you ask which one are you gonna give up?
Oh, so you mentioned, you mentioned just that we did go through that process. Um, and and staff wanted, we asked someone, what, Jun- Juneteenth? And they, what about Caesar Chavez Day? And I said, okay, if you want one of these days, then which ones you want willing to give up? No one wants to give up anything, so.
It should have started maybe a holiday or two.
Well, well, it, and as we said, here's here are the choice, you know, because one thing, we we have um the day before Thanksgiving off, we have, we have Christmas Eve off, most, most agencies don't do that. So that's a nice benefit, and then we have two floating holidays. And so we said, okay, if you want to add another holiday, which one of those do you want to give up? And no one wanted to give up anything, or I would say no one, but majority of the employees did not want to give up. So 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 that's why we don't recommend any additional holidays.
Yeah, I think the day before Christmas and the day before Thanksgiving, I I.
Always like that.
Remember when we made that policy.
Yeah, always like that.
Okay, back to the wastewater management, is grade three high enough for management, or should they go to grade four, grade five?
Grade five.
Certification.
There there is no grade five, there's just, grade four is the highest. Uh, and we required that for the manager. Um, and then do we require the supervisor too? I don't think, I think we lowered that, didn't we, the supervisor?
Supervisor, I think, is any grade.
Great, yeah. We we think, we think it's more appropriate for the manager to be the four, because the manager is gonna be the one overseeing the entire department.
Is the manager a four?
Yes, manager should be four, yes. Yes, the manager is, but supervisor should be three.
I'm I'm a grade five wastewater certified, there is a grade.
For operator, the operations plant always, yeah, your operator, where's the collections?
This is collection.
Yes, collection.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I'd hate to give you, I have to give you a grade, you're, you're somewhere in the ether.
Highest grade.
Um, continuing the popularity contest up here with the board, and and I hope you all understand, we're we're looking at everything. Um, I I think we need to bring this back to the June study session.
Yep.
Okay, and the one thing that I I really appreciate is the breakdown that that Director Echols talked about between special districts and cities. Um, cities, the guy the employees tend to be much broader, which is not always a good thing. I mean, we're special districts because we specialize, right? So I'd like that, this idea of the uh telecommuting, let's put that on a separate discussion plan if we can.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm sorry, I was talking to staff, I'm sad.
Pay attention.
Yes, I'm sorry, Fred.
The telecommuting.
Yes.
He he wants them separate.
That that I'm 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 reiterating that we need to keep that separate for for more discussion and.
Sure.
Uh, did I miss? Since you've got the cafeteria plan up there, employee plus one, can that be a partner or a child? Or is it, it can, it there, it's it's an open category, right?
Yes, it's a, would be a dependent, it can be a partner, domestic partner, spouse, child.
I I forgot to ask that, or Brett, did you have something?
I was just gonna reiterate um those two points you 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 mentioned. And also just again, I'm good with uh exact math, Caitlin. So it just put it into our budget, some sort of little budget summary for the next two, three, four years, something that I can just go, boom, here's what it is. Um, or five, thank you. Sorry, we're we're becoming real unpopular up here. But I think those items would be great, and then you had said the June study session, right? That would be.
That was part of the staff recommendation anyway.
No, it was actually to bring it back in in May board, but but Director Echols not gonna be here, so June is, June is.
I would appreciate if you could do June, since I won't be at that May.
No, I I intended June study.
Yes, perfect.
You're off marrying a kid.
Alabama.
Staff, is that?
Yes, we're clear what you bring back, thank you.
Thank you, good, good discuss, there's, there's a lot of stuff here. And appreciate the hard work. Uh, Doug, thank you for your work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to the batteries.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Angela Kalunga is not here to do this uh report, she's, she is currently at a conference. Uh, so she's out of the office for for the week. So um she 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 did prepare the staff report, did a fantastic job on this, on the staff report. And as you see, we had um seventeen schools uh participating in our um alkaline recycling, um battery recycling program. And the seventeen schools collecting nearly nearly twelve thousand pounds uh of of batteries. And when we presented this, the staff report to to the CAC last week, um, Julie Beretta from um CAC R N R told um the committee that they experienced, I think, at least one truck a month that catches on fire due to batteries. And so this.
A month or a week?
Well, it was a week or a month, maybe a week, yeah, it was, it was quite often. So they they applaud this this program and keep the batteries out of the waste stream. So so twelve thousand pounds is fantastic. And I I also like with the staff board, you can see um Angela put in the past winners as well. You see um Davis is kind of losing their mojo a little bit there.
I was gonna say, what happened to David? I think I could, Paul Reno do.
Yeah. So great, this is a great program. Um, I do want to recommend, I think I did mention the staff, I would like to consider, I mean, we bring this back to the board, consider increasing the uh monetary awarding, award amount to to schools. Um, but we got time to talk about that, something in the future, maybe we can, we can talk about. But um all a great, great program, well received, so um this is just for um Stephen File.
Glad to see it's not you.
Yeah, yeah, they're great.
Do we, and I guess we have to, I need to ask Angela, but do we know what Paul Reno did? Did they just?
I I I think that the PTAs, the PTAs get really more involved, and so they're really hammering home. Um, there was a great suggestion, actually, we were presenting this from the the CAC last. Um, there was a great suggestion, actually, we were presenting this from the the CAC last week, one, uh, one of our newest, um, community members suggested. Um, putting up, uh, uh, signs, uh, to remind, um, students when they come in, hey, drop your batteries. So something we're gonna approach the school district and see if we can, you know, make up a sign and if the schools want them, they can, you know, put one of them in front of their schools and remind, remind the school, that's a great idea.
By the way, on the news this morning, city of LA, there was a trash truck on fire and it caught four cars on.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, it's very common.
Good, Brett.
Yeah, I did see that brutal, but, um, I agree, Scott, maybe we could look at the financial rewards. I think this is a huge program for very little cost at the end of the day. My other question is, uh, how is the awards presented to the top three? Do you just mail them a check? What what's the process?
If you could, with the picture, show the picture. We we, we actually, there's a picture in the staff report, we actually, uh, do do. In the past, it used to be the board would do this and if you, if you want to do it, we weren't happy to do it, but we would give like a, a big check, a nice ceremony, here's, here's their check, you know, kinda, you know, um.
So there is, so the staff is going to the school and present, I think that needs to be promoted big time throughout the. I was also gonna say, I know, one more thing. But even recognizing at the, uh, uh, school board meetings, because they're the ones driving policy over there too. And if we do a presentation of their principal, their three principals or assistant VPs, whatever. At the school board, they always tend to like that.
Yeah, we are, we are gonna mention it this Friday, the liaison committee is on the agenda, that's good, but we can, we can take it a step further in the board meeting, sure.
Awesome, thank you.
We used to bore your time, but we would go to the school and someone from staff would bring one oversized check. I gotta tell you, I really enjoyed doing that. I I got a kick out, especially at my grandkids' schools and, um. If we give some thought to maybe next year going back to the school.
Yep, I mean, they all have flag backs, they all have.
And we get them on Flag Day.
Yeah.
When I used to go to the schools, I I used to turn around and, uh, have the check. But I used to say, you know what, you did so many last year, can't you top this? You'd be a leader school, you know, get them all wound up and they, they really get excited over this. And then, you know, talk to the teacher, threw them up there while they're there. And that, there's a lot of excitement, you know?
I remember going to.
And the parents are there too, parents are usually in the background, listening to everything that's going on. So, so they know too, and the kid goes home and tells them.
Going to Victoria School and my granddaughter Leah was there and, uh, we didn't tell her our grandpa was coming to make this presentation. And so the principal says, oh, we have this, whatever, and would Leah Schaefer please come? And she looked up and thought, oh, rap, here comes my grandpa, you know, it was that kind of, but. It, it made grandpa's heart go, so, um, good job, I, this is, this is a good example of the. Our partnership with CR and R and I I, I don't know how many school districts do this. But it's, it's a great program, I think.
Uh, the quantity collected, how does it compare with previous years?
Um, it's, uh, if you go, go.
Is it in the?
Yeah, it's in a separate fact, um.
Oh, no.
Uh, there's, I think, go in the attachment, there's one. We go, we pull up an attachment.
Has program data, it's right, right there.
Oh.
There you go, yep.
Oh, oh, I didn't get, I, I, I got, I, that's a chart I didn't get to.
You wipe, what happened in twenty twenty one?
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, item five, the denial of the application, Scott, Gina, Scott?
Yeah, I I, you know, I can do this real quick, it's, um, basically, as you know, uh. Last, um, on April twenty second, staff, uh, presented to the board, uh, a contribution application from the city. To sponsor, um, be a sponsor at their, uh, Independence Day and they wanted, uh, compensation, um, for that booth, up to a thousand dollars. Uh, the board directed, uh, staff to go back and ask the city, um, would they waive that being that we're in other public agencies? And they said no. So we're coming back to you and do not approve that contribution, we'll deny, I, our recommendation is deny the application.
Do you have an issue with that? I don't think so. Yeah, it's pretty cavalier, I think, so. All right, um. No other items, so we'll go to oral communications and director comment, comments. I have a, I have a question, um, and I didn't want to embarrass myself, but I'll embarrass myself now. What is, the term you were using with, with Mike Balier? Doc?
The minimalist.
The minimalist. What does that mean? Less?
Well, I had to look it up this morning.
Oh, no wonder, no wonder.
Well, I, I was wondering, well, basically, I was wondering if it was a, somebody, his city or district's policy decision. To give him the waiver.
I was thinking, when I did, when I read it in staff, I was thinking of a reduced amount of stuff going in, but, so it's.
You can, you can Google it, it's.
I suppose.
I had to Google it this morning.
Actually, I pulled down an encyclopedia this morning to see.
No.
It wasn't in there. Uh, any other comments from the board?
Your way to the board meeting on Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, staff, thank you, thank you all very much.